From the school bus act. Oh seven. From the summer school class.
It's six o'clock and I'd like to bring this board, regular scheduled board meeting to order. At this time, I'd like everyone to call for a moment of silence. Amen. At this time, we'll rise, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public comments, but I would at this time like to recognize Emily Grimes. I'm sorry, Emily, last month I did not recognize you, but it's good to have you. Emily is with BRAC?
School liaison officer from BRAC.
School liaison with the base realignment. And she was here with us last month. I apologize for not recognizing you at that time. Also tonight, we have Doc Odom of Lee County Commissioner who is liaison to the Board of Education. And Doc, always privileged to have you with us. And thank you for your time. With that being said, I will need a motion to approve the agenda at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have one addition to the agenda I'd like to add.
We have Mr. Thompson that has requested an item so that the board and those in the audience know it has to do with board, individual boards allocation for this year for expense reimbursement. So that will be on item four, under new business. And I'll recognize you at that time, Frank.
Yes, sir.
And also, Dr. Moss will make a presentation on the superintendent's report regarding some late developing news from the QSCB bonds. And that will require authorization. He will be, after he makes his presentation, I may ask Lynn at that time to make the motion for authorizing Dr. Moss to submit a letter as required by DPI. That will be item five. So I'll recognize Lynn on item five. Any other revisions to the tonight's agenda?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second by Dr. Smith. Any other questions or discussions? Being none, all those in favor signify by aye. Opposed? At this moment, I'll take a motion that will require second to approve the minutes for July the 21st and August the 4th inclusive.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of 7:21:09 and 8:04:09.
Second by Ms. Mangum. Any questions, discussions? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Announcements and reports. The Chair will recognize Mr. Andy Bryan, Assistant Superintendent for Corrections.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Had the pleasure tonight to present to you the ABC's report that was actually presented last week to the State Board of Education. And just wanted to present to you the, some of the more specific data regarding how our students in school have performed in the course of the past year. You have a data sheet in front of you in reference to some of those, some of those stats. Very pleased to say that 13 of 14 schools made either expected or high-growth. Schools that were making high-growth, Brag Street Academy, J. Glenn Edwards Elementary School, Lee County High School, Southern Lee High School, and Wesley Middle School. Schools that made expected growth, BT Bullock Elementary School, Broadway Elementary School, Deep River Elementary School, East Lee Middle School, Greenwood Elementary School, JR Ingram Elementary School, Sand Lee Middle School, and Tranway Elementary School. Along with recognizing growth and high-growth, which recognizes two years' worth of individual student growth and all of that information is combined together to determine whether a school meets growth or not. Also, schools are given a status by State Board of Education regarding how well they've done. We had two schools that were recognized as schools of distinction based upon their composite. They were Tranway Elementary School and Wesley Middle School. And I believe in your packet explains that they have to have a composite of 80 or above to meet that along with the other criteria. And the other schools of progress were BT Bullock, Broadway Elementary, Deep River Elementary, East Lee Middle, Greenwood Elementary, J. Glenn Edwards, JR Ingram, Lee County High School, Sand Lee Middle, and Southern Lee High School. And looking at the data sheet that you have in front of you, you'll see that we made some really nice progress across grades two through three through eight in reading and math. Ranges from a level of 9.2 in reading to 14.4 at grade eight. And in math, there was a gain of 6.2 all the way in range to 15 at grade seven. High schools who did not have the benefit of retesting for their, for their testing certainly showed some growth. We have two areas certainly where we're going to make some changes in reference to what we did, but overall, I think our grades three through 12 with EOGs and EOCs showed tremendous progress. Graduation rate, we slipped .7 percent as a whole. However, if you look at where we compare with the state average, you have how we did last year, oh seven oh eight compared to oh eight oh nine. And you also have performance of subgroups. And you have the state oh nine average in how we compare to that. So we feel like we've made, made progress with many of our subgroups and feel like that we're still on the right track with where we're going.
What happened in physical science in high school?
We believe that it's just a matter of not being aligned properly with, with where we need to be with the test and the curriculum. And we've made the adjustments.
Sure.
Under the graduation rate, are some of these categories double counted such as?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they can, yes.
You think that they're going back up to the high school? Do you think that there'll be a carryover if we improve in physical science and later on in physics? So because they're so closely aligned, I know one is usually senior year, junior or senior year?
We're not sure how much of correlation there is there. I think typically, we have different groups of students who sort of take each one, different interests and different, I'm not sure how closely they're correlated with each other. We just know that we need to make progress and things like that.
The other thing the board may need to know is that the state has decided not to test chemistry or physics next year.
Next year. Only biology or science?
And physical science.
Physical science. And yet kids don't take, do they take that much physical science now? I thought there was something else they usually took.
Most students take biology.
Right. But in, in, in ninth grade, the science that most students take is, it's about the earth science is what's?
Yeah, earth and environmental science.
Earth and environmental science. So why would a student take physical science?
To make sure they have a mandatory number of credits in the science to graduate.
Okay, but it typically they're very small numbers.
It's smaller than what we would see in biology, yes.
But usually, you know, the physical science, because it's divided into two parts, chemistry and physics, you know, usually there's a chemistry side of physical science and then the, and then the physics side. And you would think that that would give you a foundation for the two going up. I just noticed that chemistry is not that high, but nevertheless. But typical student going in isn't taking physical science, they're taking earth and environmental science if my memory is correct. I had a question. I, I thought the scores were wonderful. Overall, in the state, were, were there many counties that did as well as we did?
We're, we're still putting the comparison together. Just from the ones that we've looked at, sort of our comparison group, we felt like we fared pretty well.
That's right. But that's, we had 92% of?
Ninety-two percent of our schools met expected or high-growth.
Ms. Mangum, to give you an idea, we, Chatham had 87.5, Harnett 82.6, Moore 87.5, Wake 87.9. So Lee County outperformed every county around us, including Wake County.
We need to say for Carol.
Absolutely, Erin.
Really. Make a statement about that, that's wonderful.
And also the hands of the realtor somehow.
Andy, thank you for that very positive report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Dr. Moss, Superintendent's report. I think you have a couple items.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We do have the state budget finally. The General Assembly worked diligently and finally had the Governor sign, went into law. There are some, not surprises and some surprises. Some of the things we've been talking about the entire time, such as the elimination of student accountability, the $72 that were used to do tutorial activities have been completely removed, staff development completely removed, reductions at the central office. Non-instructional support was completely eliminated and then the General Assembly backfilled it with stimulus dollars. The surprise component was $225 million that we get to decide how to make that cut. For us, it's almost one and a half million. We will have to use positions to make that reduction. I know some of the rhetoric across the state is that we are not to harm the classroom, there's no way not to harm the classroom when you're looking at 1.5 million dollars to send back. We're in good, in an excellent position. No one currently employed is in danger of losing their position. Matter of fact, we made reductions to the point that we will be able to put some positions back in, especially to satisfy the K-3, to ensure that the K-3 enrollment will remain the same. Then we will reduce class size grades four through 12 as much as possible as far as the positions will go. As you remember, we did riff teacher assistants. It is not my intention at this time to bring back teacher assistants until we get class size back down to where we need it. The main focus I believe we should have is to get our class sizes, move them back down from the 30s back down into the low 20s. We will not have enough positions to do that effectively this year, but we'll use all the positions we have. Any questions on the state budget?
Yes, sir, I have one. I understand that, I, I get a lot of questions from my family because they're in education all over. And my one daughter asked me that, or made the comment that they were getting all of their TAs back. They wanted, they let go, they were getting back, including all of them. What, and said, how many are y'all getting back? And I don't think that many.
That's a different school district?
Yes.
The teacher assistants?
Yes.
How many are we getting back right now? I'm not planning to hire back any.
That's what I'm saying, how are they, how are they hiring them all back?
Well, then what they've decided to do is hire back teacher assistants and not hire teachers. You, you can't do both. To make up the reductions, you have to make a decision who should be hired back. I think that we should hire teachers back as far as possible to reduce the class size. For us, it would be the decision to hire back somewhere around $900,000 worth of teacher assistants and not hire back $900,000 worth of teachers. It's, it's a choice.
Very good.
Just want to, I think that's a great decision, very much for smaller class size. I think that's just so important in the learning process.
I agree, I agree with you.
I did have a question on, more at $4 were cut. How does that affect us?
I've not heard the current allocation, Mr. Bryan, have you?
They're, they're in the process of trying to figure out how many slots they're going to lose.
Okay.
Last week, there was an indication, they felt like they had a pretty good idea of where they thought they were going to be and, and felt like that, obviously they were going to take a cut with, with spots for, for students, but it was probably not as bad as at Dollar City.
So is that, I'm just trying to be particular, is, is, that does not affect the program that is at Warren Williams, is that correct?
At this point, we believe that, that what we have at Warren Williams and we also have some spots at Floyd 9.
Right, and I knew Floyd 9, that was my next question.
They'll be very comparable to where we were last year.
Okay.
That's our hope.
Yeah, and then my other question is Medicaid has also been cut? And how does that affect us with our programs with speech and language, for example, three and four-year-olds in the county? Does that affect that at all?
Are you talking about the MAC reimbursement, the Medicaid reimbursement? The services will not be affected.
Right, because there's, there's such fine services.
The services will not be affected. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you also have, in accordance with our new policy, you have two bids that are listed as number two, the dishwashing chemicals and ice cream bids that are listed there for your information. The next item, are there any questions on those bids? Next item is, we, it's called an open purchase order for the college liaison for the Lee Early College Program. It's similar to contractual services. The community college will bill us and we will reimburse them the cost of the salary and some supplies, materials, and travel in the amount of $63,000 for the college liaison for the Lee Early College Program. And that's information as well. Are there any questions? Last item is conference call that I participated in this afternoon as part of being a member of the Superintendent's Bond Council. The QZAB dollars, Qualified Zone Academy Bonds, have been approved. We were approved for the $4 million that was submitted. There is still money on the table. It was decided that we now can apply for any amount with no limit. We have 60 days in which to determine what that amount will be and resubmit that, or submit that information to the Department of Public Instruction. The QSCB, the stimulus dollars, we were approved as everyone was approved for their initial allotment. Some systems applied for more than what they were allotted. They do not get that additional amount. They will be approved for the amount in which they were initially allotted. Within the next two weeks, school districts have the opportunity to submit a letter of intent to sell bonds up to an amount with no limit. So for instance, if we were allotted 2 million and all we want is 4 million, we would submit something for the other 2 million within the next two weeks. If we do not submit within the next two weeks, we, we don't get it, we only get the allotted amount. So for us, when we're looking at Lee County High School, there's a gap of dollars. Our initial allotment was 1.78 million. We were approved that. We have the 4 million in QZAB, 5.7 million. You know, our project, we're estimating approximately 18.7 million. So we have this $13 million gap. So what we can do at this point in time is apply for that $13 million out of the 86 million that's still sitting on the table for QSCB. And we need to send that letter within the next two weeks with my signature and a signature from the county, whether it be the county manager or the county commissioner, or the Chair of the County Commissioners. And then after two weeks, the bond council, we will get back together and decide the allocation formulas back out to the individual school districts.
And if I may add, that is item five that Lynn will make the motion on. That's why we made it item five under new business, to authorize the superintendent to initiate the list.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless there are questions.
By them opening up and making this unlimited, what was the, could you just talk about what the plan was if it wasn't through QSCB?
When you say what the plan was, are you talking about the funding for Lee County High School?
That's correct, sir.
To, to gain the other funding? We were talking about structuring that to the point that it would be borrowed out on the open market, interest-bearing bonds instead of zero-interest bonds. Remember, all of these will be zero-interest bonds. Just the interest savings is over $10 million. Just the interest savings, not counting the market savings of the 20% that we will save in the market, the interest savings is over $10 million.
Now, to complete the project, we're talking about the total completion of Lee County High School, that we will save $10 million plus 20% to do the job for Lee County High School.
Yes, sir.
And the repayment plan on the QSCB is what?
12 years. And it would, obviously zero interest is principal only.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. Before I recognize the board, I mean the chairs and committee chairs, I have a little bit of work to do with regards to the North Carolina School Board Association. The annual conference is November 16th through the 18th. It will be in Greensboro again. It's the 40th Annual Conference. We have opportunities for four delegates, four voting delegates. If you plan to attend, please notify Susan. And first come, first served, the four of notifying Susan will be the delegates. So it's a simple process. When you look at your calendars, you see November 16th through the 18th. If you plan to attend, contact Susan, the first one will be the first delegate, up to a maximum of four. Also, I'd like to welcome Jimmy Love back.
Be back.
I'm sure you are.
Be real quiet.
I notice you're sitting quietly and reflective and thank you for all that you've done for Lee County and the House seat 51 in the last six months. I'm sure that you may not have had many, much gratitude for the time you spent in the last few days, but thank you for your diligence, Jimmy, and welcome back. Ms. Mangum, curriculum instruction?
Curriculum instruction committees did not meet this past month. We will meet the 2nd of September for the high school at Lee Senior and the 9th of September for the middle school at Wesley. And I just want to again thank everybody in the school system for all of your hard work. Those test scores were just magnificent. Mr. Bryan, who's sort of in charge of it all, that was really, really good work. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Dr. Smith, facilities and technology?
Mr. Chairman, the facility and technology committee has not met since the last meeting. Our next meeting will be August 25th at 5:00 PM. But I would remind everybody that in your packet was a proposed expenditure for next year's lottery money. And I'll put that like that.
Thank you. Finance personnel, Mr. Thompson?
Finance and personnel has not met since the last meeting. We have one scheduled next week and we'll report in the next meeting.
Mr. Williams, policy?
Policy has not met since our last meeting and we'll be meeting in August.
Great. And before we conclude this report, so, comments, I will remind you that we will have one more meeting before we have, we host the District School Board Association meeting September 17th, 4:00, is that right, Susan? Sand Lee Middle School. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve as presented. Mangum?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second by Ms. Mangum. Any discussions or questions? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no unfinished business. We have new business. Chair recognizes Mr. Williams on board policies.
Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the following policies. They are just editorial changes. Policy 1010, 2330, 3120, 3130, 3135, 3230, 3400, 3431, 3440, 4230, 4500, 4510, 6200, 6325, 6510, 6525, 8721, and 8740.
These are editorial changes only. The board has adopted that this is the first and only reading for these policies.
That's a Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Mr. Williams? Being none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Williams? Now, these are second reading?
First reading.
First reading, I'm sorry, first readings.
Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the first reading of policies 5030 and 8210.
And this is coming from committee?
That is correct, sir.
It will not require second. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, relative to, to policy 5030, I'm not sure I understand the, the change. Under paragraph four, it said fees relative to nonprofit revenue may be waived if fees are not charged or associated with the activity. I don't know what that means.
No worries, if a nonprofit is going to gain money from that, if it's a fundraiser for the nonprofit, then it'll be charged. If it is not a fundraiser, then there will be no charge.
Well, then maybe this should second, should read that we could impose a fee rather than waive a fee.
We already have a fee schedule.
Your fee schedule already identifies the fee.
And this just clarifies that if it's a nonprofit not, not having an activity that raises money?
Right.
Then the fee is waived.
But all the other fees would be there?
As stated.
As stated, correct. Custodial fee, that's correct.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Item three is from administration in the fact that the, this is a timing. Item three is from administration in the fact that the, this is a timing issue, and if I could have a motion read to, regarding lottery fund projects, Liam, if you can make that motion?
Frank's motion comes first. I need number four.
No, this is number-
I know this.
We're at number three right now.
Read for motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, go ahead.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the 11 lottery applications in the amount of $1,451,000.
And this is not coming from committee, so we'll need a second to the motion.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any questions or discussions? The synopsis is, has been provided for us, but if there's any questions?
Question? Yes, sir. This figure is projected, is any assurances that we're going to come close to it, or?
Yes, sir, we're pretty confident we're going to come close to it with the carryover. We receive somewhere between 1 and 1.1 million per year, depending on how frequent you play the lottery. And so we, we have some carryovers, so we're pretty confident on the dollar amount.
Any other questions? Motion's on the floor, seconded. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four, the chair recognizes Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, I move that due to current economic conditions, that the expense cap for the board members be lowered to 1,000 per member per year. This is not from committee.
I have a second for the motion.
A second.
Second by Ms. Mangum. Any questions of Mr. Thompson or discussions on the floor? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And at this time, item five amended to your agenda, Dr. Liam Smith. This does have a motion to authorize the superintendent to act on the report he's given.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Lee County Board of Education authorize the superintendent to submit application to DPI for additional quality school construction bond funding in the amount necessary for the construction at Lee County High School.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Thompson. The floor is open, if there's any other questions of Dr. Moss.
Question, it goes to county commissioners before it goes to DPI?
We have two weeks in which to submit the letter, and it will require my signature or the chair's, and the county manager's signature or their chair. I believe county manager and I have spoken, he's planning to take it up with his board Monday night.
So the, there's a timing issue? The commissioners will have this on their agenda for Monday night. Okay? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair recognizes Mrs. Mangum.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go in closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under the CGS Section 143, 318, dot 11, A, number-
I have a second for the motion. Second by Dr. Smith. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
We will continue in closed session in the boardroom.
I have one for your cases.
We have two, we have a motion for the report, another motion, yeah, it will be two motions. One is for the human resource report on personnel, and then a motion to approve the assistant principal at Broadway. There are two motions that we'll need. Who's ready to make the first motion?
Mr. Chairman, I want a motion that we see the personnel report from the human resource officer, Glenda Jones.
Second by Ms. Mangum. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second on the assistant principal, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation to employ Mr. James H. Strickland as the assistant principal at Broadway Elementary School.
Second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to point out something on this. This last sheet here, which is James Strickland, at the top of the page, it's got written June 9, 2008. Okay, you just mind that. Okay.
Chairman?
Williams.
I move that we adjourn.
Adjourn. Chairman?